This public meeting to order, the Planning and Zoning Commission today is May the 16th, 2019. I guess, second item of the agenda is, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Jose Teles?
Present.
George Meckelheimer?
Present.
Raoul Galde?
Present.
Johnny Navais?
Present.
Abraham Lugo?
Present.
Jorge Domigas?
Present.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have four of them.
Second item of the agenda is, can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The fourth item on the agenda is consideration and approval of the minutes for May 2nd and April 18th of this year. Once everybody's read them, I'll entertain the motion.
I move to approve the minutes of April 18th, 2019, and the meetings, the minutes of May 2nd, 2019.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Villarreal, Erasmo Villarreal and Carlos Flores cannot be here today. Is there a motion to excuse their absence?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the citizens' comments. I have five cards from Mr. Alanis, Ms. Kohler, Ms. Perez, Mr. Garza, and Mr. Castro. Is there anybody else?
Is this to speak?
I'm, all of these seem to be regarding items 6D and E, which I believe is the E.
Yes, we would like to also speak.
Okay.
Can I put these cards out?
You don't have to. We're gonna call them a little bit, we're gonna take them out of order so we can do them right now, because I think we're gonna have an announcement regarding them, but I'm just verifying, the names that I called, those are the items, those five people wanted to speak regarding Mueller, the property, the item regarding the property right next to
Which school?
The elementary school there in La Bota, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is it okay if we punt these until, until the item is up? Alright, thank you. Our first item on the agenda is 6A, but I would entertain a motion to hear item 6D and 6E together.
I'll make a motion to hear item 6D and 6E together.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now, I want to make a motion to move up those items to the beginning.
Yeah, a motion, do you have a second? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, we have updates on those items. On 6D, staff is going to request that those, this item and the following item be postponed, time uncertain. And the update, we did receive one letter in favor and three in opposition to 6D, and we received four letters in opposition on 6E.
Who's requesting it?
Staff. Staff is requesting.
But is it staff, or is it because of another department?
Well, the, the issue is, is that we, in, in discussion with legal department, feel that all the tracts that were initiated by council at the previous meeting should be presented at the same time, as well as the subsequent tract that was added by council member also needs to be voted on by council. So in order to have all those tracts be presented in the same time, that's why we need to have these tabled.
Is there a way that we can get, this is not the first time these items have been before us, I think, for example, this is the third or fourth time we've dealt with it this year? Is there a way we can get everybody's information that's here, for example, Mr. Otero, and many of the people here from La Bota, have been here every meeting, and so if there, is there a way that we can get their contact information, give them the next setting ahead of time, not just on the agenda, but, like, all the cards of the people that are here that want to speak, I'm sure they want, they're gonna wanna speak when we're gonna hear it?
Well, for the record, this is the first time that zone changes are being presented. You may be thinking about the utility trailer plot?
The utility trailer plot, it's been the same issue, it's the same group of people, the same suspects, and so I would ask that, just courtesy to the people that come out of there-
We did, we did send letters for, in the 200-foot radius for both of these tracts.
Okay, but I'm saying directly to the people here that have, can, is there a way we can tell them, it's gonna be, whether it be June or July, whatever meeting it is, to let them know, and have legal, if they're gonna be here, to be here, send a representative, whatever their issue is, and let's just deal with this issue once and for all, because we've been dealing with-
We can certainly forward that request to legal, for them to be present, at the time when these are, items are presented, and we can also check with management. Typically, we don't reach out other than the people in the 200-foot surrounding property owners, but if management agrees, we'd be happy to do that.
Well, there is no, there are no residences within 200 yards of either property. It's the school and then the M1s that are on the other side. So, none of these people live within 200 yards, there's no houses within 200 yards, and so I'm just asking for courtesy, because it affects, these are all the stakeholders involved, and they've been here at every meeting.
We'll, we'll definitely check if, if, if we can do that, and we have, we'd be happy to, if we're allowed to.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's table. I apologize, ladies and gentlemen.
Just, just to be heard, since we didn't make the effort to be here, and we were not at all, you know, and now I'm hearing the four letters in opposition for, I believe you said E, and I'm, that's fine, and then D, you have two circles, that's going to be postponed, time uncertain?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, could you explain that a little more, just a second?
Time uncertain means that we don't have a, a set date when the items will be back. Right now, in preparation of the other tracts, there's some uncertainty when we get the, when we can get the surveys done, so that is, right now, the city doesn't have any surveyors' staff, so we're in the process of procuring those services. So once we get those, those services on, I guess, on, then we can move forward with initiating the surveys that are needed in order to process the other tracts that were initiated through council.
The three that are presented by council-
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Is, should, should you come up?
Actually, what, what I'll do is, I have five cards. Ignacio Alanis Jr., Mr. Alanis, would you like to make a comment? Please state your name.
Yes, good evening, Chairman Teles and honorable commission members. For the record, Ignacio Alanis Jr. I'm here on behalf of UISD administration and have a prepared statement to read on behalf of Superintendent Roberto Santos. The purpose of this letter is to voice the school district's opposition of the applicant's plat submission to plat property in La Bota subdivision next to the elementary school, which is to be used for utility tractor trailer parking. To allow consideration for a tractor trailer parking lot to go forward will cause detrimental traffic and safety concerns for the students and administrators attending the elementary school. Further, the noise and pollution that will be caused by these tractor trailers allowed to park next to the elementary school will have a detrimental effect, not only to the students attending the school, but also our employees. We urge that the Planning and Zoning Commission considers approval for the proposed zone change as listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alanis. Next card I have is Linda Kohler. Would you like to make a comment?
Is this the microphone that works? Okay. So I'm actually representing Utility Trailer Sales, and I'm glad that we're actually gonna talk while there's residents here, so they can understand what we're actually doing, because I think there's a lot of misconceptions out there, and applaud you for what you have to do, because this is a very difficult situation for you guys and for us. But the B, first of all, we have no intentions, and anyone on planning and zonings that's seen our plans, we have no intention to use any access off of Mueller, Mueller Road. All our access is gonna be up industry. So I just wanna put that out there, which eliminates the idea of the noise and the traffic in front of the school. I think that makes us a good citizen, and we did that on purpose. Also, if we come down industry, that's better for us, because we actually have our dealership at the end. And I don't know how much you guys know about trailer dealerships, but we're just like a car dealership, except we sell bigger stuff, okay? And none of those are running, okay? So when you go to a car lot, they're not running the cars, right? They're just sitting there empty, yeah? They don't have people in them, they're not running, they're not creating any pollution or noise. Same thing with our trailers. They don't have anything in them, we're just selling empty trailers to end users. So I just wanted to kinda put that out there, so you knew sort of where we were coming from. We wanna be good citizens, we're not doing any kind of hazardous waste, we're not doing anything that has, and, and to be honest, M1 doesn't guarantee you the ability to store hazardous waste, you still have to get a special use permit for that. Planning and zoning and city council can still deny that, right? And not change our zoning. Secondly, I just want y'all to all be aware, myself and the other property owners, we paid a premium a year ago to buy this property, because it was an M1. I got a letter from Planning and Zoning, I mean, I have it right here with me, we went to extreme lengths to make sure that we did our due diligence to pay a premium for the property, and here we are now, not able to even be able to use it for what we intended to use it for. I mean, if any of you guys wanna write us about a $1.7 million check, we'll let you have it, you know, but we're stuck. And I just wanna, I mean, it's real money to us. This isn't, we just paid a couple hundred dozen dollars for it, you know, 50 years ago. This is recent, and I'm sure that some of the other owners have the same thing to say about that. And then, also, if you look at a map, I mean, I love elementary children just as much as anyone else, but if you look at a map, they're really the outliers. We match everybody that's the neighbor, and, I mean, there's trucking companies all over there, and the school, you know, to be honest, the school and the school district maybe should've done more due diligence on their part to not build a school next to a light industrial. It hasn't changed, it's always been that. We're just doing what it was already city planned and developed to do. So that was really all we had to say, but we'll obviously come back when you have the next meeting, and I drove six hours here from Houston, so I feel their pain in being here and not actually being able to get something done, but at the same time, you know, we're committed to this as well, and we'll be back.
No, I apologize, I do, not only to you, to everybody that's here, I think it, it's very inconsiderate, and that's why I wanted to specify, it wasn't necessarily staff, it was another department that doesn't send any representative here to
Yeah.
...tell you all, and we're stuck being the bearers of bad news, saying that an item's been tabled when they should've been more forthcoming and given everybody notice.
It happens.
And so I apologize.
We're in it for the long haul, so whatever long it takes, it takes. Alright, thank you very much.
The next card I have is from Vanessa Perez.
I think I'll sign up here.
I will go through all the cards, and I'm going, technically, you're limited to three minutes, technically, only three people can speak, but because of what's going on, I'll do it, but people really can't hand off time to another person. The next name is Raoul Garza.
There was an accident along the road, that's what happened.
Our problems are the mine road.
Right. Do you wanna speak on behalf of both of them?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joanne Pailand Otero, and I'm a resident at La Bota and have been for 19 years. I appreciate having someone explain to us from Utilities Trailers, their position. I think I am a business and living there, two different entities, so my concerns are this. As I explained to some other people, and I've had conversations with the school district, because I'm a retired educator, and my primary concern is the location of utility trailers and the lot just west of Mueller. I understand it was a business deal purchased, and probably fairly, but at the time, and I, I'm gonna defend the school district on this one, she made a comment, and she said, "Well, they should've done due diligence." As a resident, I guess I should've done due diligence when I built a home at La Bota. When I entered that residential area, I trusted that the city representatives, the planning and zoning, and the entities there, had made sure it was completely residential, and that no city planning had allowed any M1 zones to exist in a residential community. I'm not faulting any of you here, please understand that. I go back 19 years as I say this, I never would've dreamed that I would be here today, speaking to you, on a matter that should not have happened by the city of Laredo, to have allowed three M1 zones to stay in a residential community. So unknown to us was that this land adjacent to the school would be sold one day to a company legitimately, so I'm not faulting them. I am concerned that no one had our backs as future buyers in a residential area of Laredo. So here I am today, concerned for the welfare of the children, for everyone, the staff, anyone who pulls in there, because we only have one entrance and one exit, that's it. I'm concerned. I understand she's saying there, these are just like a parking lot, or they're going to sell them. I guess I have lived there long enough to know that a chemical spill, a gasoline spill, whatever it might be, could happen. And then I'm concerned, what is the evacuation plan that the city has? As I drive on Mines Road, I see the trouble that our firefighters have, and policemen, to try to take care of concerns that bring in the bulk of the money to the city of Laredo. I see that, I live it, we're late today because of it. But I'm here today to say, okay, depending on what you do with this, and of course, I, I, I really am supportive of the B3 zoning change for a lot of reasons, but primarily because we don't have an evacuation plan in place, I feel that would be the responsibility of the city of Laredo, to come up with that, if you leave it as it is. She said the trailers will go out trade. They're still gonna be parked on a lot adjacent, just west of Mueller Elementary, a high point of La Bota. Should anything happen, it affects not just the school, but of course, everything westward too, which is where the residents live. So I ask for you to consider those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Memo Castro?
Thank you, board members and staff. Just like Joanne mentioned, I've been a resident only seven years. I remember years ago, when the Mines Road, at one time, the master plan called for manufacturing. Along the way, we diverted into housing, and that is great, you know, I'm all for business. But there was one comment that said there that a check for $1 million, something that puts it on your hands to pay your off. The part that I have to say and counter out that is that, what price do we put on our children? So gentlemen, today, that's non-negotiable. We have had chemical spills on the Mines Road, twice, and at one time, they had to evacuate people. The problem is here is that the city is responsible for putting us in harm's way. Your job, and I don't think I have to explain to it, is to, to defend our property's own values, to decide what direction our city grows, the proper way. And the proper way, we're gonna move Laredo forward, we need to stop the comparrismo, we need to stop the, ah, it's okay, we can do this. You put an M1, you don't put a school. You put an M1, you don't put a residential. The only people that do that is in the United States of America, is Laredo, Texas, and we should be ashamed of that, because we let money dictate to us, we let landowners dictate, dictate to us. The growth of our city has been stagnated, because we let certain investors tell us what to do. There's a lot of issues that are wrong with our city. If we're gonna move Laredo forward, we need to do it for our children and the future. Let your legacy be today and tomorrow, that you stood up for the people of Laredo, not for the private sector. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Teles. Is there some problem if I speak Spanish, it's better to me?
Can I speak English or Spanish?
Gracias. Yo soy Michael Gutierrez, y estoy preocupado porque soy inversionista en esa zona, y yo adquirí el terreno cual es hoy cuestión. Estoy preocupado porque cuando, antes de adquirirlo, un año y medio antes hicimos muchos estudios, vimos las circunstancias del terreno, y vimos que era viable hacer una inversión grande en ese terreno. La legalidad nos dice que el que es primero en tiempo es primero en derecho, y esa zona fue desde hace mucho, mucho antes que existiera la escuela y cualquier cosa programada para que fuera una zona industrial. Ahora, y aceptando la preocupación de los demás inquilinos de esa zona, veo que debe de respetarse el estado de derecho, que es el que rige el gobierno de los Estados Unidos. Yo no sé si se afecte a alguien o no, pero cuando se hizo esa inversión, precisamente tenía que verse que todo era legal, todo estaba sostenido, sostenido en leyes, y que era así como debía funcionar en una inversión. No podemos desacreditar una ciudad comercial y industrial como es Laredo, que es el segundo puerto en los Estados Unidos importante, y empezar a dejar ver que a todos los inversionistas que el día que se le ocurre, a quien sea, puede cambiarse por cualquier razón un uso de suelo cuando ya tienes estudios para una inversión. Lamento mucho a quien se pueda afectar, pero la verdad es que hay una inversión sostenible que generará mucha riqueza a todos los que estén cerca de ahí y a todos los residentes de, de la ciudad de Laredo. Muchas gracias.
And last card is for Richard Khan. If I don't say your name completely here correctly, you-
No, you're fine, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. If you don't mind, I'm gonna go ahead and read mine, because I've got a lot, lot to say. I'm objecting to the change in the zoning for, for these properties, particularly mine, but, but for both, and I'm gonna say, it is illegal for George Alkelt to initiate the zoning change on a private property for the sole purpose of appeasing adjacent landowners, and to help him get votes. At the city council meeting, George Alkelt on record said that the residents of La Bota do not want the industrial, and that that is why he is initiating the change. This is illegal. The city can initiate zone changes if there is a public use of necessity, not just to appease an adjacent landowner. Councilman Alkelt has personally told me, with witness present, that unfortunately, for me, I do not vote in his district, and that the residents of La Bota do. This is being done to appease a select disgruntled few that do not want industrial surrounding their neighborhood. I understand that. But these residents purchased their property knowing full and well that the industrial was already there, and was not going to just disappear. This property was zoned M1 before La Bota was even created. In addition, 150 acres adjacent to the neighborhood to the north was just changed in 2018 from residential to industrial. Why were they allowed to move so far up in zoning, and we are being forced to step down in zoning? I spent several months meeting with environmental utilities, traffic, planning and zoning, engineering, to come up with a plan for a nice warehouse project that would not cause any 18-wheeler traffic on Mueller Boulevard, before buying this property in just January, just a few months ago. Now, just a few months later, and after a sizable investment, I'm being told that I just have to eat my losses. A deal had been worked out with all of the city offices, and with the association of La Bota, who is in our favor. If this passes, the land will be useless and worthless. Not only is there not enough rooftops to support an 18-acre commercial development, but the Laredo Utilities Department has given me notice that a warehouse would be the only type of building that they would allow for us to connect to the city sewer system because of city sewer capacities. No other type of building would be allowed, residential, commercial, multifamily, only a warehouse. Again, I must emphasize that this proposed use would be detrimental to our project, and would cause significant financial damages. This would send the wrong message to investors and developers who have interest in Laredo. This action would result in the inverse condemnation of my property, with no public use of necessity, and without any just compensation required by law. Furthermore, this action was previously presented in 2013 by Council Madera, and was reversed due to lawsuits, which were initiated by previous landowners. The legality of these zone changes was obviously not there, so why are we rehashing this illegal action that will only cost money and waste everybody's time?
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Alright. That's it. Those were three comments on each side of the issue, those were the people with the public comments section, the people that submitted cards prior to, in fact, we let people come in, after the 5:45 PM deadline. We're moving on to item 6A. This is a public hearing regarding the amending of the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by repleting ordinance 2004-063, and authorizing the issuance of a conditional use permit for general automotive repairs on lots 19 and 20 block 30 Vista Hermosa, Unit 2, located 5417 and 5419, the Fearsen Road. This is a public hearing with anyone that wants to speak in favor of the conditional use permit. This is initiated by Olga Cavazos, her applicant, and Carlos Cavazos, representative.
Mr. Chairman, there are no updates.
There are no one, I'm sorry?
There are no updates.
Anybody wish to speak against the zone change? Alguien quiere hablar en contra del permiso? Or the wishes of the commission?
And one quick question, I'm still navigating this, I apologize. Where are the, well, show me where the comments are from staff.
Where, where's-
What page number is it?
This is 6A, starting on eight, and the staff comments-
I got it, I apologize. I move to close comment. Commentary? And approve?
We had a motion, we got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 6B, which is amending, it's a public hearing on an amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 22, Block 1, Deerfield subdivision, Phase 4, located 1,002, Big Bend Boulevard, from B1 to a B4. This is in City Council District Number 7. Honorable George Alkelt, the proponent, is El Diamante Development Group, Norma Perez, owner, applicant. Anyone, this is a public hearing, anyone here to speak in favor of the zone change? Alguien quiere hablar en favor del cambio?
Okay. A quick question, I'm the one that's doing the zoning, but my mother's not here at the moment.
You state your name for the record, and state your reasons.
Jan Perez, so I'm planning on opening something there new, the reason I'm changing it is because I wanna open a new business there. I'm planning to do a B4, because I wanna make, like, make a smoking lounge, and I really wanna make, to see.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question for staff. He could get a special use permit, you're saying?
It is required. He needs not... The B4 would not permit the proposed use. He needs a special use permit, also.
Oh, also?
Also. So he needs to be in a B4 and get a special use permit. And a special use permit, and I think we have advised the applicant, I'm sure we have, is that there are certain distance requirements between the establishment and residential areas, which is 800 feet, if I'm not mistaken. So it would probably be very difficult.
You need a highway zoning B4 for a smoking lounge?
Yes. A smoking establishment requires at a minimum a B4 with a special use permit.
So a special use permit at a B1 is not acceptable?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question also.
Good.
Okay. Ms. Getta, so the CUP is only allowed for this establishment if it's already, or if it turns into a B4, not if it's a B3 or B2?
No, it needs the B4 zone, and it needs a special use permit.
Okay, is there a way, and I'm not saying we would do this, but is there a way to move the smoking establishment categorization to a different, you know, specificity about this?
Change the ordinance to allow smoking establishment in a different zone?
In a B3, or that the CUP can be done in a B1?
Yeah. That, I mean, of course, that's at the discretion of council.
We can recommend, we can push forth recommendations to the council to take up certain issues. We can say, we're asking, as a, the commission, we would like to ask the council to consider moving the smoking ordinance from B4 to B3. We can do that for... Now, whether they listen to us or not is something different, but we can recommend that.
Or whatever the prohibition is of using the CUP. You see, that's like a double whammy, that B4 is pretty intense.
Yes. But you can ask for an amendment, but because everything's in the ordinance already, we have to ask them to add, and then send it back down for public discussion, kind of like what we're doing at the end. On the last ones, we're going to deal with discussion of potential ordinance.
Okay. And so, Ms. Getta?
Yes, sir.
Aside from the B4 thing, which is like the immovable object, right? Is there anything about it being allowed in that area? Are you able to comment to that?
Meaning, why we're not in support of the zone change? We're not in support of the zone change because it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan. The surrounding zonings on that side of, what is it, 1472, are all B3 or lesser. There is a B4 to the north, but it's divided by a pretty big divider, 1472, and it's vacant at that area. I think it's a park.
Okay.
So the surrounding uses are less intense, the surrounding zoning is more compatible, and the comp plan doesn't, you know, is not compatible with the comp plan designation of mixed use.
I see. Well, Mr. Chairman, if we make a motion only to, for them to review the, how a CUP can be used in this situation, how would we word that?
I would, we can ask the applicant if he wants to table it so he can, rather than face a negative recommendation, if you asked for us to table this item, so you can look into seeing whether or not you can get a conditional use permit for the type of use you want. They have, they only stay with the applicant, they can't be transferred, and it's a less restrictive, it doesn't go through the whole rigors of changing the zone, but not saying that it's going to get approved, it's just, rather than the way it is right now, you're probably not going to get an approval.
I have a quick question. I have the, it's because we own mostly the whole block there. We have a salon right in the front. I believe it's a B4 as well.
If you have the B4, you have to be, that's something you can discuss with staff, but I think you've got to be pretty specific as far as what portion of the property it is that you intend to use for the use.
Yes, sir.
But would you like to have a chance to pull your application back, change whatever you need to change, and then come back without having to spend all the fees and do the headaches all over again?
Mr. Chairman, for that specific use, we cannot process a CUP. This is an SUP, a special use permit specifically for that use. And even on an M2, it is required to get the SUP.
Okay.
For the smoking.
Oh, can he at least table it to see what, and coordinate with you all what he can do?
Are we getting the same views?
Yes. Well, whatever he wants to do.
Sure. It's up to him.
Would you want to table it, or do you want us to consider it?
I would rather for you to consider it. I mean, honestly, this is something I really want to look into, start like a new business to create more jobs there. I know that's already like an industrial sector. I see no harm in it, and I'd really, really like to build something.
Anybody else?
I'm sure that, you do know that if this body recommends in opposition or denial, you still can appeal and go to council.
Yes, yes.
I have one request, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
So the smoking, what is that? What's the details? What is that?
You have the definitions in your packet, but if you'd like, I can go ahead and read them off. It's kind of sort of lengthy. It shall mean, is that what you want?
I see it here now, yeah. So for a B... I'm just confused as to the...
And there's different types. It's a tobacco, smoking establishment, a tobacco shop, and then there's a drug and tobacco paraphernalia shop, and they're very different. And there's different performance standards associated with each. In this case, for the smoking establishment, the special use permit, and of course, special use permit's not before us, so maybe we, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I'm just concerned that the category is in a very high zoning.
And the ordinance did come in fairly recently, in 2016. This is a recent addition to the Land Development Code. I guess there was some proliferation and new sort of use.
Any, anyone else?
One last comment about that. Hold, Mr. Dominguez, I'm sorry? No, go ahead. The, so the 300-foot distance, I see that on the bottom end, as per this picture, there's the residential abutting the land, but it, I'm sorry if this sounds silly, but if they indicated that the tobacco use would be on the furthest point, does that count as the 300 feet?
No, in this case, for the smoking establishment, if I remember correctly, it requires 800 feet. Am I correct? It's 800 feet.
It's worded twice. Let me look at it again real quick.
Says it may not be located within 800 feet of any residential zone, district, church, a public or private elementary, a middle, high school, a daycare, licensed state...
Tobacco shops is 300 feet.
College or university, public playground or stadium. That's in the definition.
And this is what you say was crafted in 2016?
Yes, sir. The ordinance in your packet, I don't know if you can see, it's very tiny, at the end of the provisions, for the special use permit, it calls out the ordinance number, which was adopted September 21. I can't tell if that's a 15 or a 16. It's very, sort of small and blurry, but one of those. Is it 16?
Looks like 15.
Can't really see.
I see November 17. 15 on 15.
15.
No, you are, you are...
And on the diagonal red lines over the pink, the pink box that isn't marked off, what is that zone? That's all, or that whole lot is B1, and they're going to...
The lighter pink is B1, and the darker pink are B3s.
And this is just to change the diagonal red line to pink?
That's correct, sir.
No, it's to darker pink.
Yeah, to that B4, so is it B4, like two lots next door?
He's really jumping to zoning levels.
Right. But B3, okay. The part that's marked off, I don't know how you want to call it, there's the diagonal red lines on top of pink. That's the effect.
That's a fight.
But they're also the owner of the regular pink that's not marked off?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Oh, I see. So it looks like, in my opinion, I'm just saying, across the street's B3, so it would look like perhaps a B3 would be what you would target, and then you have to work on the SUP. I'm just trying to help you process this, but the B1 to B4 jump is rather significant.
No, he wants to hear it today. He wants us to make a decision. He doesn't want to...
Table it.
Table it.
I mean, I believe it would be best, I mean, I know it's a big jump from B1 to B4.
Oh, I see, so that way goes the city council.
Yes.
Okay. I'm learning. Okay.
Commissioner Dominguez?
I just, there's some mechanisms that are in place for the type of business that exists.
Yes, sir.
Special use permit is in this function.
Yes, sir.
The reason that a B4 is not approved for that area is because you can bring other businesses that would be adverse for the community. So B1, that's pretty much what that...
I don't believe we'll bring another business, because we have that whole block, we own it since like 2001, I believe. So it's just a family business. We're not going to bring anybody else. It's just going to be me.
Just to be clear, Mr. Dominguez, it requires a B4 and a special use permit. A B1 plus a special use permit wouldn't allow it for a B3 either?
Whatever, B3, yes, a B4.
But once he tabled the item, he can try to look at other options as far as a business name or the way the business can be done and brought to the community, maybe that other type of business can fit. We know that a B4 and a special use permit is not appropriate, so either we deny it or he tables the item and goes back to staff and tries what we can have, because I will make a recommendation to approve.
Any other comments or discussion? What are the wishes of the commission?
Well, that we close comment and support staff's recommendation. Is that how that's worded?
And close public hearing, support staff's recommendation, and deny the zone change.
I'll second the motion.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Is there any? Thank you.
Item 6C is a public hearing regarding the amending of the zoning ordinance of the City of Laredo by rezoning approximately 3.74 acres, as further described in meet and bounds, Exhibit A, located in the north side of FM Farm Road, Farm to Market Road, 1472, from agricultural to M1. This is proposed by Grupo Centro Limited, Luis Hurtado, owner applicant, and Gilberto González, professional engineer. This is a public hearing. Any of those that wants to speak in favor of, or alguien quiere hablar en favor?
Mr. Chairman, this isn't anywhere near Boulevard, is it?
It's all near Boulevard.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Gilberto González from Terroir South Engineering, and we are in favor of the result.
Any questions of the applicant or of staff from the commission? Thank you, Mr. González. Anyone here to speak against the zone change? Alguien quiere hablar en contra del cambio? Any discussion?
No.
What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation for the zone change.
Second?
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 6D, public hearing regarding amending zone change of the City of Laredo by rezoning approximately 10.78 acres, as further described in meet and bounds...
This is table.
Oh, next one. Sorry.
6F, sir.
Sorry. Public hearing regarding item 6F, amending zone change, zoning ordinance, rezoning approximately 2.85 acres, located south of Farm to Market Road, 1472, from B3 to M1. Council District 7, George Alkel, MOS Professional Building, Mr. Vernal Sly, owner, and Ricardo Villarreal, representative.
Mr. Chairman, item 6F and 6G, the applicant has requested to postpone these items. Time uncertain, both of them.
And we have a motion regarding item 6F and 6G being heard as one item and being tabled.
I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Ms. Getta, you're familiar, a legitimate question, because I've been, do we follow strictly, do we strictly follow rules order? So postpone indefinitely does not allow this to go, it does not proceed to city council anyway?
No, no. These, plating, or, pardon me, this is a zone change, no. This would not proceed to city council. It would be tabled, or postponed.
It's literally postponed until it's brought back?
Until it comes back.
From the landowner?
Until they request for it to come back.
By the landowner.
Yes, that's correct.
It can't go to city council unless we approve it or deny it. But if we table it, it can be kept here. A zone change can be kept here.
Right, but, you know, the whole table thing is that tabling is for a very short period of time, actually normally within a meeting, and postponing is to a specific date, or postponing indefinitely is, it's just up in the air, floating around till the proponent, the landowner, brings it back.
Here, everybody uses just tabling.
Well, see, Ms. Getta's using, no, I like it. You're correct. The, what do you say, postpone indefinite?
Time uncertain.
Time uncertain, yeah, same thing as postpone indefinitely. But because it's a zone that positively doesn't move forward.
No, it won't.
Okay. Well, then, is this still public hearing? Yeah, I move that we close public hearing and postpone time uncertain, or postpone indefinitely.
Is that regarding both item 6F and 6G?
Pardon me, 6F and 6G.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 7A, regarding, this is a public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of AG Agricultural District on a tract of land holding 478.31 acres, known as Annexation Tract 1, located north of Wormsor Road and east of Loop 20/4 Vientos Road, as required by a section of Texas Local Government Code. Peticioners, Raúl Valdez, and initiated by Raúl Valdez. Do we have anybody here to speak in favor of the annexation? Anyone here to speak against the annexation? What are the wishes of the commission?
I have a question.
Any discussion or questions of the commission?
Yes, sir. Ms. Getta, so this is to, for the property owner to be recognized as within the city limits?
To be incorporated within the city limits, yes, sir.
I see, and so they can have access to utilities?
Yes, sir.
This is like a step? Okay.
Correct. And to establish the initial zoning.
Okay, but it's just agriculture right now?
Yes, the initial, they've requested agricultural soil land.
Yeah. Any other questions, staff?
You know, staff, can I make a motion?
Sure. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion, close public hearing and approve the annexation.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Just for clarification, does that include the support or approval of the initial zoning as well?
Yes.
Yeah, that was part of the recommendation by staff.
Just to make sure.
Yes. Second, so item 7B, public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of AG Agricultural District on tract of land holding 328.98 acres, known as Annexation Tract 2, located south of Wormsor Road and east of Loop 20/4 Vientos Road. Proponent is also Raúl Valdez. Anyone here to speak in favor of the annexation? Anyone here to speak against? Any questions or comments by the commission? Do we have a motion? What are the wishes of the commission?
I think a motion, close public hearing, approve item...
And support staff's recommendation.
Support staff recommendation. Second, a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have item 7C, public hearing and recommendation for the voluntary annexation, initial zoning of M1 on a tract holding 6.26 acres, and commonly known as Annexation Tract 3, Retiro Tract, located north of Farm to Market Road, 1472, and west of Copper Mine Road. It is proposed by Grupo Centro LTB. Anybody here to speak in favor of the annexation?
Mr. Chairman, we did receive one letter in favor of the zone change, or the proposal, sorry.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The reference is Terroir South.
South Engineering, and we are in favor of the annexation.
Any questions by the commissioner, comments for Mr. Gonzalez and/or staff?
Just one quick question for staff. What's the current zoning?
There is no.
No zoning.
Oh, so it's some ranch land to M one?
It's outside of city limits, so it doesn't have a zone yet.
You have an aerial.
Got it. Okay.
Now, is this a connection to the property that's just, I guess, that's west or?
Yes, sir. What happens is a total of 10 acres and the front three point, some of the acres that we just discussed is already in the city limits, but zone AG, the 6.26 acres.
This is the back six?
Yeah, so we're connecting them. We're rezoning, we're annexing, and we're plating.
But your entrance is through the front six. That's like, what is, they're like at the front corner of Coppermine and that corner, they sell like tankes or tanks, right, or water. That intersection, like there's that, the trailer, M one already over there to the next of you, right?
Yeah, adjacent to this property is already an M one.
Okay.
Question for staff. On the zoning map, I do see low density residential. Does that have any impact as far as your recommendation or?
Do you mean on the conference plan?
No, on the Retiro, there's a coded, color coded map, and I see the track that he's asking for annexation, and I see low density residential right above.
I think that's from the.
It's from the comp plan?
Or future, future use.
Yeah, this is the conference of plan, the future land use. So, but his tract is identifying the comp plan as light industrial.
So we're right there.
We're up there.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions or comments to staff and/or Mr. Gonzalez? Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else who wants to speak in favor? Anybody else wants to speak against? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation for the zone change.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven D is a public hearing regarding the recommendation of ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one of a tract totaling 76.22 acres or known as Track Four, the Holesman and Vasquez Track, located north of Farm to Market Road 1472 and west of Farm to Market Road 3338, Las Tiendas Road as required by the Texas Government Code. This is, the petitioner is Insight Development LLC, or Insight Development Services LLC. All those that want to speak in favor of the annexation?
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the commission. I'm Alfredo Martinez with Crane Engineering, and we're in favor of the annexation and the initial zoning of M one.
Any members of the commission have any questions or comments regarding staff and/or the petitioner? Thank you. What are, any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Is anybody wants to speak against the annexation? What are the wishes of the commission?
I move that we close public hearing and support staff's recommendation to approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven F, it's a public hearing regarding the recommendation of ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one of a tract of land totaling 1.5 acres, commonly known as Annexation Track Six, Lot 20.
Sorry, you skipped which, E?
E, I take that back. Item seven F, public hearing regarding.
So E.
Somebody.
Seven E, public hearing and recommendation, I need bifocals and I don't want to. Public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for the voluntary annexation of initial zoning R one, single family residential district on a tract of land totaling 24.43 acres, more or less as described, commonly known as Annexation Track Five, the Mandel Truck, located east of Max Mandel Municipal Golf Course and west of Farm to Market Road 1472 as the Texas Local Government Code. Proponent is, petitioner is Manuel Gonzalez. All those that want to speak in favor, alguien quiere hablar en favor of the annexation and the initial zoning. Anyone want to speak against? Comments or questions by commission?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Getta, so I know we had an item sometime back about some land near, near the Max Mandel Golf Course. It's something, something commercial. I can't remember, but is there a, is there a zoning plan here?
I can't remember.
On page 288.
It was, I think they were asking how far. They wanted their being tabled. Those are the ones close to the Max.
Right, but I'm not wanting to speak about those. I'm just wanting to remind everyone that, you know, let's plan this intelligently so everybody, whether it's investments and expectations and gnashing of teeth and pulling their hair, you know, what is, whatever the plan here, city needs to tidy up what they're going to allow and not allow, and we'd like to know about it too. And, you know, Stan?
I think, I think the, the future use on that area that far up is essentially everything that is farm to market, 1472 to the river is either residential, and the future goal is to keep all the industrial slash commercial.
South or southeast?
On the opposite side of 1472 away from the river.
Oh, so on the south of the road?
Up there by the Max, 1472, I don't, I think it runs east-west, right?
Yeah.
And so, so south is the riverside, like, so that's supposed to be residential?
Yes.
For environmental issues so that if there's anything spills, it doesn't go straight into the river. And so all the industrial goes away from, on the side away from it.
Okay, no, I understand that. But is there a map or something like that that we can look, not right now, but that we can get? Just to understand the area better. No, no, but, oh, that's the planning?
Well, this is a comprehensive plan. See, these shaded areas would be like neighborhood mixed use. So I don't know, I mean, where's the look? This one, I don't know if it goes that far. Where's the location? The Max 287 should be here.
287.
No, no, no. From the comprehensive plan here, the 289, there's a big one, but the Max is.
Are you looking for?
Oh, wait, no, it is there. It has to be there, yeah. Because that's Columbia. Yes, it's right here. So it's right there. So the shaded areas here would be the.
Are you trying to see where it is in sort of in the world?
Page 289. No, where it is? No, on page 289 of our packet. If you scroll, if you put it on the overhead.
Are you looking at this one?
Oh, the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, but, but that, like that map, but zoomed out.
Zoomed out.
If that is page 288.
289.
We're looking for the next page.
It's the future land use map.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go, sorry.
This one or no?
No. It's.
It's that one, but zoomed out.
Okay.
You bring it, what's the next one?
That's the zoom in of.
Oh, no.
So it's right there on that last nook of the Rio Grande, the Max.
Yeah, so where is it on that map?
I can orient myself.
There's that hook.
It should be this one right here.
So that's green and red and like cultural parks and high density residential.
Is it even on here?
Well, move down, keep on following 1472. It's right, right there.
Right there.
Is it right there?
The Max should be so.
Yes, right there. I need my full glass.
Well, I have to zoom in the PDF. This is annexation.
So they would come back for zoning.
They're coming in for an R one?
They're coming in as initial as R one.
Right. No, that's great.
Oh, hey, there it is.
I'm just, because we're hearing the stuff about proximity to residences. I'm just, and I know we had an item that was tabled. One of y'all remember that? That was some commercial thing that was going to be somewhere nearby this, and so they pulled it instead of it being voted on.
Yeah, I think if, if you want to look at that, there was these, these were the zone changes, right? This is, I live right here, these two. And so they wanted to know how far they were from the entrance of the Max and how far they were to the river. So there you go.
Oh, okay, good. And so this is not only unplanted, it's, it's all just ranch land?
The one we're talking about, this one, yes. Right now, it's vacant and undeveloped, right?
Yes.
All right, just trying to stay ahead of the curve on people buying stuff thinking they're going to get this and they get the surprise.
Well, they still have to deal with the future use and comp plan. Like, that's already.
Because none of this is, has any zone.
Technically, no, but it still has to comply. Like, if they want to come in, for the most part, they, they should comply with what's already been proposed.
On the comp plan. And the comp plan has that whole area as like low density residential.
Okay, very good.
And that's what they're initially zoning for R one. So they want to do smaller homes next to Buckles.
Yes. Like, like, um, that catch club?
Essentially, someday. Any other discussion or questions? What are the wishes of, of commission?
Motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation for zone change of R one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, item seven F.
No.
Public hearing.
Yes.
And recommendation for an ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one, Light Manufacturing District on a tract of land totaling 1.5 acres, more or less as described in the attachment, known as Annexation Track Six, Lot 20, Block Two, Pinto Valle Industrial Park, Phase One Track, located north of Farm to Market Road 1472 and east of Lampasos Loop as required by Texas Local Government Code. The proponent or is initiated, or was initiated by Mario Palos Garza. Anyone here to speak in favor of the annexation and zone, your establishment of the zoning?
Good evening. I'm Daniel Gomez, from Daniel Gomez Engineering, representing the owner, and we're in favor of the zone change.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah, annexation, I'm sorry. We're in favor of the annexation. Thank you, Fernando.
We haven't had an annexation in a while. I think it's the second, I've been here four years or five years, and the second time I've ever done. It's been a while. Any, what are the wishes of the commission? Or wait, anybody here to speak against? Thank you. Alguien quiere hablar en contra? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to close public hearing and approve.
Second.
The annexation.
The annexation and the initial zoning.
Do we have a second?
For staff recommendation.
Although, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven G, it is the public hearing regarding recommendation of ordinance for the voluntary annexation and initial zoning of M one, Light Manufacturing District of a tract of land totaling 8.87 acres as described in Exhibit A, known as Annexation Track Seven, COT Properties LLC Track, located north of Anawak Drive and east of Pinto Valle Drive as required by Texas Local Government Code. The petitioner is Marcelino Flores. Anyone here wish to speak in favor of the annexation and initial zone establishment? Favor, alguien quiere hablar a favor? Anyone want to speak against or hablar en contra? Questions or comments by the? What are the wishes of the commission?
Close public hearing and public staff recommendations and approve the annexation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item eight A, Los Presidentes. This is a review and reconsideration of Los Presidentes East Master Plan. The intention is residential and commercial purposes. Of the revision is to reconfigure phases and realign street designs. The applicant is JMLG Holdings Limited. The engineer is Howland Engineering. There are comments from, there are 12 comments from planning, two from fire, four from water and utilities, 10 from traffic safety, one from parks and leisure, and one notice to developer from planning.
Mr. Chairman, the, it looks like item eight A and nine A, the applicant has requested these, this, both of these items be postponed, time uncertain.
Do we have a request on behalf of the applicant? What are the wishes of the commission?
I have a motion here, both items eight A and nine A together.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion.
Oh, motion carries.
Make a motion to table both items.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
They were the same thing.
One's the subset of the other one.
Okay.
Nine, item nine B, applicant is HAPO Holdings LLC. The engineer is Poros Nance Engineering. It is the preliminary consideration of a plot of Santa Elena subdivision, phase one, intent is residential, District Three, Mercurey Martinez. It's a 22.99 tract acre tract of land located south of Don Camilo Boulevard and west of US Highway 83. Zoning for this 151 lot development is AG. The tract is located in District Three, Honorable Mercurey Martinez. Planning has seven notes or comments. Water Utilities has three, Traffic Safety, one, Parks and Leisure, one, and two notices to the developer from planning. Mr. Nance, good evening.
Mr. Chairman, Wayne Nance, Poros Nance Engineering. We looked through all these comments. We agree with all of them.
Any questions by the commission of Mr. Nance? Thank you, Mr. Nance.
Thank you.
Commission, have any questions or comments to staff or discussion? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to the following comments.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine C, it's a preliminary consideration of replata of lots one M and one N, Block Four Eagle Ridge at the Country Club subdivision into Lot one MN, Block One Eagle Ridge at the Country Club division. The intent is residential. District Six, Honorable Marte Martinez is a 0.21 acre tract located along Eagle Ridge Court between McPherson Road and Country Club Drive. The zoning for this one lot development is R two. The tract is located, proposed actions approved, subject to the following comments. There's seven comments from planning, two from water and utilities, and two notice to developers from planning. The applicant is Laura Morales. The engineer is Daniel Gomez, Engineering PC.
Good evening. I'm Daniel Gomez, and we concur with the, all of the comments.
Anybody, anybody from the commission have any questions of Mr. Gomez?
No questions.
Comments or questions of staff or discussion by the commission? What are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve nine C and with all the listed comments.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gomez. We have item nine D, which is a preliminary consideration of plot of San Isidro Northeast East Boundary Plat. The intent is residential, District Seven, or Six, I'm sorry. Commissioner, or Honorable Marte Martinez. It's a 2.93 acre tract that is located east of Crecusculo Drive and northeast of Date Palm Drive. The zoning for this four lot development is R one. The proposed actions approved, subject to the following comments. There's one comment from planning, two from water and utilities, and two from, two notices to the developer from planning.
Mr. Chairman, we had one tiny correction. If you notice, right next to the water utilities, it mentions no comments were submitted. We would like to remove that. That's just sort of a little bit of housekeeping there.
I guess I stated that there were two comments. We could redact the no comment submitted portion. The applicant is San Isidro Northeast Limited. The engineer is Slay Engineering Company Incorporated.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Ramon Ibarra, and we concur with the comments.
And you asked for us to get rid of the no comments submitted, correct?
I didn't.
No, it was.
Oh, it's us. Any questions of Mr. Ibarra from the commission, by the commission? Any questions or, thank you, Mr. Ibarra. Any comments or questions of the commission of staff and/or discussion?
One quick question. The water utilities thing that we, for staff, that's a typo? You cut and pasted it from another place?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, very good. No, no other questions.
What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to the following comments, redacting the no comments submitted in water utilities.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have item nine E, the preliminary consideration of the replata of lots 11 through 19, Block Two, Pinto Valle subdivision, phase one, and 60.88 acres out of, of land out of 30 acre tract conveyed by D to PG Alpha LLC into lots 11A, 12A, and 13A, Block Two, Pinto Valle subdivision, phase one. The intent is industrial. The site is a 30.38 acre tract located east of Farm to Market 1472 and south of Lampasos Loop. The zoning for this three lot development is M one. Tract is located, Commissioner. The zoning for this 3-lot development is M1, tract is located, commissioner in the District of District 7 for the Honorable George Alkelt. The proposed action is approved, subject to the following comments, four comments from planning, one from water and utilities, and two notices to developer from planning. The applicant is Mario Palos Garza, and the engineer is Daniel Gomez, engineering PC. Good evening again, Mr. Gomez.
Good evening, Daniel Gomez, the project engineer for this project, and we concur with all the comments.
Do we have any questions by the commission of Mr. Gomez? Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Do we have any questions or comments or discussion by the commission regarding with What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to the following comments.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
What is, I'm sorry. We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to hear items 11A, B, and C together?
We're missing 10A.
I'm already getting ahead of it. I'm sorry.
He was hungry.
Item 10A, the preliminary reconsideration of plat of Hidden Heaven subdivision, the intended as residential, it's a 5.66 acre tract located just south of Shiloh Drive and adjacent to Shenandoah Valley subdivision. The zoning for this 20-lot development is R1, tract is located in District 6, Honorable Marte Martinez. Proposed action is subject, approved, subject to the following comments, six from zoning, or six from planning, one from engineering, one from traffic safety, two from parks and leisure, and two notices to developer from planning. The applicant is Hidden Heaven Venture, and the engineer is Crane Engineering.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission, Alfredo Martinez with Crane Engineering, and we concur with all those staff's comments.
Any questions of Mr. Martinez regarding, by the commission? Any questions of the commission of staff and/or discussion? Thank you. What are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve with the attached comments.
We have a motion, we have a second, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 11A, go. I have a motion here, items 11A, B, and C.
I'll make a motion here, items 11A through 11C. Other?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve items 11A through 11C.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12A, this is consideration of the model subdivision rule compliance for the plat River Hill South subdivision. Recommendation is approval. We have any questions or comments from staff? What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I apologize, I was already reading, I thought it was. Item 13A, revision to City of Vareto Land Development Code, Chapter 24. This is a, regarding the revision of the City of Vareto Land Development Code for the purpose of amending the dimensional standards, setback requirements, and any other matters incident heretofu. The proponent or is initiated by City of Vareto Building Development Services Department.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Yes, Commissioner.
At our last meeting, we voted to table it, and we asked that staff prepare a workshop